So I will call to order the 7:00 PM session of the Nelson County Board of Supervisors for January 14th, 2025. We're going to start the meeting with our public comments. Thank you to those who signed up on the sign-up sheet for public comments. Just to let you know, for those who may not be familiar, when I call your name, please come up to the podium, give your name and your legal address, and you have three minutes to tell us what's on your mind and why you're here. If you are representing a group, you may have five minutes, but you need to speak for that group and then other people for the group, don't, basically.
On your side.
So, yeah.
In your drawer.
Yeah. Okay. Dr. Ligon will put up the 30-second sign when you're getting towards the end, at the end of three or five minutes, she'll put up the stop sign, and at that point, you need to wrap it up, basically. The Chair has the ability to grant more time if it turns out that you need it and it's the right thing to do. So, that being said, the first person who signed up for public comments is Denise Tussow.
Hello. I'm Denise Tussow, 249 Lobbins Lane, Afton, Virginia. So I learned that Savion has a good neighbor program that would provide rooftop solar systems to the two homeowners in the project area who requested this system. The Virginia Solar Renewable Energy Credits for those rooftop installations will belong to the homeowners and not Savion. The same was true for any rooftop solar installation in our county. The renewable energy credits belong to the system owner, which is normally the homeowner. Renewable energy credit pricing is related to the total amount of solar power generation in Virginia. Denying a large-scale solar installation in our county has no effect on pricing of renewable energy credits because an equivalent solar installation is sure to occur in another county. I understand that Savion has recently updated their site plan proposal with additional funds for the county of a total of $20 million, and also would award a $10,000 scholarship every year to students from the Southern District of our county. I believe that Savion is doing their best to be a good neighbor and share as much of the project income as possible. There are many ways the county could use the income from this project, such as more support for our schools or adding solar installations at the high school campus and other county buildings. If approved, I hope that Nelson County and Savion will work together to make the project a showcase of best practices, especially for the stormwater controls, erosion management, and agro-voltage possibilities. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Tussow.
I'm Mike Tussow, and I live in Afton. Denise. Good evening. At the December 10th public hearing for the large-scale solar project, several of the negative public comments included some incorrect claims. Here's three of those claims. First, the claim that Savion solar panels made by a USA manufacturer for solar will poison the environment. Well, the metal layer in these thin-filt panels is 1/30 of the thickness of a human hair, and the metal is encapsulated by glass layers on both sides. That glass is so strong that running over a panel with a 50-ton compactor leaves the encapsulation intact. Researchers at our very own Virginia Tech published a report on these first solar panels. They found that the panels are not toxic even when damaged by hurricanes, tornadoes, or fires. Second, the claim that leaving the 500-acre site as a tree plantation is the best way to limit atmospheric CO2 pollution. The purpose of the solar farm is to reduce CO2 pollution by displacing fossil fuel energy. The 90-megawatt solar farm would produce about 200 gigawatt-hours of energy per year, with a CO2 footprint mostly from the panel manufacturing of about 5,000 tons per year. Gas-fired generation with the same energy production would have a CO2 footprint of at least 100,000 tons per year. So the solar farm prevents 95,000 tons a year of CO2 emissions that would have come from gas-fired power. Now, compare that to the 3,000 tons per year of CO2 sequestered by a 500-acre pine forest. The solar farm is going to keep 30 times as much CO2 out of the atmosphere as that 500-acre forest. Third, the claim that approving the Savion project would automatically open the door for additional projects. Our comp plan and zoning ordinances are very clear. Every large-scale solar project has its own special use permit. Each project is evaluated only on its own merits, not the outcome of previous SUP requests.
Do I have 30 more seconds?
All right. There's one more claim made, that the total amount of solar needed in Virginia would cover 3,329 square miles. Well, the best information I've found is from several sources, and they all say that we need about 16 gigawatts of solar in the next 20 to 30 years. Well, the 10 acres per gigawatt, I'm sorry, it's 16 gigawatts, and that takes up about 251 square miles if you figure 10 acres per megawatt. So 251 is a far cry from 3329. Okay. If the Savion project is approved, it's fine with me if there's no other large-scale solar project. The Gladstone location may be the only one that works. In summary, I hope you all will base your votes on facts and not incorrect information. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Ann Michie.
My name is Ann Michie, and I live at 1856 Monica Drive in Nellis Ford, Virginia. I have listened to the comments that were made in December, and I spent a good bit of Christmas vacation researching solar farms and the needs for electricity in Virginia. One of the questions that was asked that I considered particularly poignant was, living in Nellis Ford, would I be willing to have one of these in my backyard? And after everything I have read and everything I have seen, I have decided that if I can manage to stare at the electrical lines that run right in front of my property, I can handle looking at one of these, given what it contributes to Virginia. Virginia is facing an energy crisis, as is most of America. We haven't been able to keep up with the demand that we have created through our use of data processing and the data farms. And unless I am willing to give up my cellphone, which I realistically don't think is likely to happen, stop doing online banking, never use a credit card again because it gets processed through those farms, the demand is there, and we are going to be in a power shortage. I consider this solar farm considerably like a victory garden during a war. It's not going to solve the energy crisis, but we've all got to do our part, and this one goes a long way. It's environmentally neutral, from the research that I've done. It's not going to cause the terrible runoff problems that a lot of my fellow neighbors have been concerned about. Its major flaw is they're ugly. And if you can stand living near sheep, which I understand the bleeding is not really that bad, they will bring along with other solar farms in other locations. The power that we need to continue living the lifestyles that we have all decided are essential. I think it's realistic. I think it's important. And Mr. Reed, as my representative, I'm staring at you. Please vote yes. And as I said, I speak only for myself, not for any other organization that I am affiliated with.
Thank you. Next, Ed McCann.
My name is Edward William McCann. I reside most of the time at 94 Forestaly Road, Masses Mill, Virginia. I appreciate the comments of several constituents from the county and their pro- advocacy for the solar farm. Just as the previous speakers have mentioned, I have also done some research, and I've also called Virginia Tech. In fact, I've talked with people associated with the Biosystems Engineering Program at Virginia Tech and found it very interesting, some of the things he said about hydrovoltaics. And they weren't very positive. And so I would remind you to be careful in decisions you make tonight, regardless of the opinion of some of the people that have spoken previously, which I respect their opinion and I trust they'll respect mine. Be careful. Once this is approved, you've opened the door for any solar farm that wants to come into this county. And although it may not ultimately hold up, it will bring litigation costs to the county, which I'm not sure you're ready to prepare for, once you're sued before denying their opportunity. I'm very concerned that this, as I said before, in my opinion, is opening up Pandora's Box. It's interesting how the company representing the solar industry tonight has upped the ante of what they're willing to give Nelson County because they're concerned, as are many people that share my thoughts. Many of my fellow Farm Bureau board members could not be here tonight because they had a very important Beef Cattle Producers Association meeting. So I share with you all their concerns also. Be careful tonight. Once that door is open, it can't be closed. Thank you.
Thank you. James Beal.
Hello, my name is James Beal, 4141 Phoenix Road in Harrington, not too far from the project site, along the Tide River. Savion wants us to believe that by allowing them to build their industrial solar installations on forest lands in Gladstone, that we will be producing enough energy to power all of Nelson's homes, something that they cannot in any way guarantee. Well, unfortunately, that point is moot. The very next day following your last meeting and public comments on this project, a press release came out about an approved data center project just a few miles down the road in Appomattox by Avio Digital. According to sources, this data center has had confirmation of 500 megawatts of power from C-Vac and its suppliers. A few points I'd like to make. It is reasonable to assume that electricity generated by this proposal will be used in this data center, since the energy is sold back to the providers that C-Vac obtains its electricity. 300 megawatts of electricity would be more than enough to power 100,000 homes, but since we are talking about demand, not supply here, this proposal will not even come close to powering even the new data center down the road. For perspective, there are, excuse me, 112,000 homes in the city limits of Richmond. It is also very obvious that the press release of the data center approval was withheld from the public until after the previous board meeting in which Savion hoped to get its approval vote. With that being the case, it is probable that Savion had knowledge of the data center project and had played a role in its timely, or so they thought, release. Based on that, it is within reason that Savion intentionally withheld this information from you, the board, and us, the constituents, because it is very counterproductive to their consistent messaging. Savion hires lobbyists and have been lobbying of Virginia Senate and House legislators that serve on the Commission of Electric Utility Regulation until recently they voted 7 to 5 in favor of legislation to create the Virginia Energy Facility Review Board. This proposed review board would create an appeal process that would go over your head, effectively taking the decisions on these, citing these projects away from you, the board supervisors, and thereby the constituents themselves, one step away from imminent domain. This is the dark reality that many states already have this power, the power to overrule our local decisions. With that being said, the conversation has now changed to what kind of company are we planning on doing business with you? Does the money that they are offering you to dilute into the general fund negate the concerns of such shady practices that undermine your constitutional authority in order to get what they want? What else are they not being upfront about? The conversation about the Wild Rose Project and other energy developments need go nowhere further than the data center debacle that Virginia has gotten into. And Virginia utility customers are bearing the real cost of this burden. Nelson County's residents will have no benefit from either the Wild Rose Project nor the Appomattox Data Center, until I wrap up. In fact, we will continue to see our utility bills increase until demand continues to outpace supply and production and on a massive scale.
Please wrap it up.
So why should residents of Nelson's southern communities be responsible for the citing of this solar project and any fallout from its construction implementation? Simply put, it shouldn't. I encourage each of you to vote no on this project and send this corporation, it has no interest in the people, the environment, or the culture of Nelson, back to the Midwest where they came from. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Catherine Allen.
I'm sure. Mary Catherine Allen, 227763 Richmond Highway in Gladstone. I can honestly say I've never heard the word Gladstone mentioned so much over the last three months. It's pretty awesome, actually. I do live within a mile of this, and I don't have anything planned to say other than ask you to vote no. I've said it before, I've said it during the planning commission reasons, I've talked to you all individually why I am not in favor of this. Any project that requires this much, what did I say this morning? Anything that requires this much work favors, proffers, and promises, the project is only as good as the paper is written on. My mom and dad always told me, if it's too good to believe, you can bet your butt is. So I'm telling you, this is not what our county needs. This is not what my home district needs. And I do not think five years from now that if this is passed, that we're going to say thank God and pass it, because I don't think Savion or Wild Rose or whoever is going to own it. I think somebody else is going to own it because they're going to sell it. And I do not think that the 90 megawatts that they're going to produce is really going to matter to the Appomattox Data Center. That's what they're doing it for. So I ask you to vote no. Take that into consideration. If people want solar in their house, by God, go get it. I could care less what you put on your house, but I don't want it in my backyard. Thank you.
Thank you. That was the last person who signed up. Is there anyone here who would like to take advantage of the opportunity to tell us what's on their mind about anything pertinent to the planning commission? Yeah.
Paul Davis, 2542 Rockfish Valley Highway in Nellis Ford. Some of the concerns I had, I've heard other people already talk about, you know, the whole database. I was kind of concerned with that. I was here in December myself, and then the very next day, I'm like, you know, I'm kind of suspicious in nature, I guess, but I'm thinking that was never mentioned during the whole presentation that night. And I'm like, this is strange. Somebody with that outfit had to have knowledge of this, and yet they shielded it until everybody heard about it the next day, which raised my suspicions about the company that we've heard other people have their own suspicion. I have some of my own concerns with the whole litigation cost that could come down the road. This county cannot, I mean, these companies have their, like some people have already said, they hire their own lobbyists and legal teams, and they have money to get what they want. And getting back to that, I've been in this numerous meetings about special use permits. You know my biggest complaint? The county has really little enforcement, they don't have an enforcement team that goes and oversees special use permits. So if you're in violation, you almost have to, as an individual, dig them up and see what they can or can't do. And then the other problem is that I've seen, unlike with this company, that's, you know, I've been through a lot of these special use permit hearings. There's usually citizens just asking for something on their property. They're not offering money to get it approved, they're just basically laying out their plan for this project. And this is another special use permit, except they're throwing money at the county and basically to try to get the approval, which again raises my suspicions where others in the county, myself included, if I wanted to do something, I don't have the money just to throw at the county to get what I want for a special use. And again, the special use permit, it's by state code, it goes with the property, not the company. And so these companies buy and sell all the time, you can see through the whole stock exchange, this money is guaranteed for these years to come. Does the county have the litigation money set aside to fight to try to get that money? If this company says, sorry, we're sold out, that's another company that promised you this money. With some of the stuff I've already seen, those really big concerns that could come up, and then if you already passed this, like I said, it goes with the property. You all know this. It stays forever. So those who live in Gladstone saying, you know, I've read, you wouldn't want to see it in the backyard, I don't think nobody would. I know from listening to the presentation, excluding the construction, I think it only gives less than 10 full-time jobs. It's not a sightly thing where people are going to come to see it. And so really, other than the money, and that's what I would say, take the money aspect away. I know the county can use it, but take it away. Is it worth voting for then? And then, as I, you know, every community, we've all had the elders always tell us, when we want to buy a car or something, our dads or somebody would tell us, son, it seems like it's too good to be true. But it usually is. If something's wrong, it seems like it's too good to be true.
Thank you. Thank you. Listen, well, I'll get back to you if that's okay. Anyone else from the public would like to speak to anything?
Once again, it's a call-in and one day, second time, try again. This zoning is...
Can you give us your name and your address, please?
Valtry Walker, 9897 Norwood Road. My concern is not even Savion and solar systems they shall be, but for this county and this situation, the way this has gone about will work to destabilize the integrity of zoning in this county. If land has been A1 since time beginning, under governance, and yet there are these companies and organizations or people who have their own agendas, want to create another zoning inside of it, it is called special permit. And the problem with special permits is that they are favor-induced. They are not necessarily based on what is good, what is best, what is rational, what will sell, or anything else. It's who has the money, who has the power, who has the law. And I am very afraid that for A1 in the South District itself, where every meeting I go to, it's South District doesn't do this, South District doesn't have that, South District is not a good place to live overall. But we can never move forward if we turn block by block and just giveaway by giveaway to companies that want to call or ask this board or any board for special permits. Because if that is the case, then what is the purpose of zoning? What is an A1 zoning? This one can destabilize whatever little integrity that exists in the A1 South District. We will be vulnerable. And for those others who live across the county or live in the central area or wherever, this isn't happening to them. But the county has put more intention and attention into those areas. We're still waiting for something good to happen and not something that we have to lose our land. We're not able to do these things ourselves, but yet the one who comes in with the power, with the money in hand, is the one who is nodded to. What is being nodded at us, who've been here, many of us, for hundreds of years? This is not the good that we were waiting for. We expect more of the county, and we will tolerate more of the slack in not having if it means keeping this kind of situation out of A1 zoning. Thank you.
I think it would be more proper for you to speak when we look at the project, not during public comments, if that's okay? So I will then close public comments. And we'll move on to our two public hearings that we have today. The first of these is rezoning from A1 agricultural to B1 business. Ms. Bishop, can you take us through this?
Sure. All right, this is a request to rezone property from A1 agriculture to B1 business to align the zoning designation with the current use and allow for additional permitted sign area. This is located at 10761 Thomas Nelson Highway in the East District. This is commonly referred to as the Sunny Mountain Store, operates as a convenience store, gas station, and the Indian Oven Restaurant. All are legally vested, non-conforming uses, they've been in existence and are grandfathered. The owners are proposing to rezone to business, to align the zoning. It would also allow them to expand their signage. In the A1 District, which is what this is currently zoned, only 50 square foot of sign area is permitted for businesses. It would, the B1 zoning designation will allow for up to 150 square feet of sign area. In 2023, the owners replaced the freestanding sign for the Marathon Gas Station. This is close to 50-square-foot limit, so they would like to expand the signage on this existing sign for additional advertisement of the business. It's joined by other A1 agricultural zoning. There are flood zones on the property. It restricts development through the flood ordinance, but no additional uses or constructions proposed. It's accessed on Thomas Nelson Highway. BDOT will review the proposed signage when they apply for that. The property is within the Livingston designation of our future land use map, where the core concept is to prioritize regional-scale development, redevelopment, and infill to protect the rural landscape, ensure more efficient and effective provision of community services, bolster economic development and improve quality of life. Primary land use types include commercials such as retail, shopping, dining, business, and employment. One of the planning guidelines identified is to preserve existing structures and traditional patterns of development while allowing mix of uses. The approval of rezoning request should be based on these factors. One, good zoning practice. Two, public necessity. Three, general welfare. And four, convenience. And at their meeting in December, the planning commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of this rezoning to the board.
Thank you. So I'm going to open the public hearing on the rezoning from A1 agricultural to B1 business, rezoning number 24-0289. I'll open the public hearing. I don't have anyone signed up for the public hearing. Has anyone here liked to speak to this? Okay. I will then close the public hearing. And before we start discussion, oh, never mind, I'll just open it up to the board, to your pleasure.
Dylan, as a reminder, were there any conditions ever added?
Since it's a rezoning, no conditions.
Perfect. Okay. I'm supportive. Sunny Mountain's been there my whole life and generations before me. It's had a huge integral part in a lot of people's commutes. I'd like to support everything that they're doing there, and if the board is ready, I'm prepared to make a motion to approve rezoning number 240289 as presented.
I'm second.
Okay, we have a motion, and we have a second. Now we have an opportunity for discussion if there's any further discussion among the board. If not, we can take a roll.
Dr. Ligon?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Rutherford?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have ordinance 0205-01, an amendment to Chapter 7, motor vehicles and traffic for local authority to reduce speed limits.
As Chairman Reed noted, this is a public hearing on proposed ordinance 0205-01, which would provide local authority to reduce 25 mile-per-hour speed limits in a business or resident district. This public hearing is authorized by the Board adopting Resolution 2024-82 on December 10th. Our public hearing notice was published December 26th and January 2nd, 2025, and is authorized by Virginia State Code 46.2. by Virginia State Code 46.2-1300A4. So the provisions of this state statute provide that the governing body of any county, city, or town made by ordinance authorize its chief administrative officer to, one, reduce the speed limit to either 15 miles per hour or 20 miles per hour on any highway within its boundaries that is located within a business district or residence district where the posted speed limit is 25 miles per hour. And also restore speed limit that has been reduced pursuant to the subdivision to the speed limit that had been previously posted at that location. And provided that such reduced or restored speed limit is indicated by lawfully placed signs, and a written notice of the speed limit change must be provided to the Commissioner of Highways at least 30 days prior to changing the speed limit. State Code 46.2-100 defines the business district and residence districts as shown here. Our proposed ordinance 02025-01 amends Nelson County Code, Chapter 7, Motor Vehicles and Traffic, adding Article 9, Local Authority to Reduce Speed Limits. Section 7-149 provides the provisions of this local authority, which would be granted following a public hearing and consent by resolution of the Board of Supervisors. Section 7-150 provides for notifying the Commissioner of Highways prior to changing a speed limit at least 30 days beforehand, and the ordinance also is effective upon enactment as presented. We'll take some question to answers or discussion from the board. And otherwise, staff recommends adoption of ordinance 02025-01 as presented.
All right. If you could go two slides prior. About one more. There we go. So in the first bullet, reduce speed limit to either 15 or 20 miles an hour, and this allows you to, this allows us to authorize you to do this. Do we have to do a public hearing at every time we want to do a road that is within that threshold?
That is the way the current ordinance is proposed, yes.
Got it, good, okay. It's just way of red, maybe feel like you could, we could just tell you, go do it.
If it weren't for that language, it said after a public hearing, a resolution by the board, yes.
Right, sounds good.
There we go. Any other questions for Candy? Okay, thank you Candy. I'm going to then open the public hearing on the amendment to Chapter 7, ordinance 02025-01. I do not have anyone who has signed up to speak at this public hearing. Anyone here wish to speak to it? Okay, and I will close the public hearing and present this to our board.
Well, this came to fruition because of my district, but it applies everywhere.
That's right.
I, I think this is more of an organizational thing, not, I don't, I don't see any reason this doesn't work, but I'm sure you can give me one.
And when Livingston is booming and bustling, we might have to use this ordinance too.
And in Nellie's Ford, it's possible that it would be something down the line to deal with.
Where do you have 25 miles an hour?
Not now.
Oh, okay.
Playing the long game here. Okay.
I'm with, we approve the ordinance 2025-01, amendment to Chapter 7, Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Article 4, Local Authority to Reduce Speed Limits.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Yeah, it's okay. Damn Romans. Is there any further discussion?
Dr. Legan?
Yes.
Mr. Rutherford?
Yes.
Mr. Parr?
No.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Okay. So this brings us to other business as presented. Special use permit, 24-0014, large solar energy system, Wild Rose Solar, post-sighting agreement, and a project appeal to the Planning Commission determination. So we will start with discussion of the special use permit. Do we have a quick overview to bring us here to where we are?
All right, so as everyone's familiar with, special use permit requests for large solar energy system, the total property area is approximately 4,600 acres, and the area under panels is about 470 acres, called Wild Rose Solar Project. This is Nelson County's first request for a solar project of this scale. It is 90 megawatt utility scale solar, lands in active timber use, remaining land is planned to remain in agricultural use during the life of the project, which is 40 years. Electricity generated, sent to inverters, converted to a current out where collection lines transferred to the substation, then it's transferred overhead transmission line to the Gladstone Substation, then into AEP's power grid for distribution. Local zoning approval currently is one of the first steps in a lengthy review process. Should the special use permit be approved, the applicants then are required to proceed with DEQ's permit by rule process, which requires that any impacts be avoided, minimized, or mitigated. There are various reviews that the state requires for that process. Do you have any questions for me? It's kind of a brief overview.
We might call you back. I'll let you know. Did you have something you wanted to add?
Gary was going to give a summary of the siding agreement changes.
Oh, you want to do this first? Yes, absolutely.
Whoever you want to speak to.
Absolutely.
All right, as the board is aware, we have received a revised siding agreement from Savion. Just briefly, I can run through what things are in the solar siding agreement very broadly. And these siding agreements are pursuant to Chapter 22, Title 15.2, Article 7.3 of the Code of Virginia, titled Siding of Solar Projects and Energy Storage Projects, that the applicant and county may enter into a siding agreement for such facilities. So the first part of the siding agreement is such recitals. Article 1 overviews some project features, conditions, and mitigations. Article, Article 2. The next article, Article 3, is miscellaneous terms related to the siding agreement. And then we get into the exhibits, which the siding agreement makes a, makes the special use permit a part of this particular document. The other thing is Exhibit B, which is an illustrative schedule of payments. This is where the compensation factor comes in. So the changes to the siding agreement are mostly related to this Exhibit B, wherein column E, additional voluntary payments, operational years 1 through 40. There's an additional voluntary payment of $230,000 per year for 40 years, which would total $9,200,000. This is an additional $4 million from the previous siding agreement proposal. Additionally, a reference was added on Page 3 in Article 2, payments, to add an annual $10,000 scholarship fund for 40 years, or for $400,000 in total payable to a student from the South District of the county. And those really are the only changes from the previous siding agreement.
Any questions for Candy about the siding agreement? Okay. Thank you Candy. I'm going to, again, I might call you back too. See what happens. Would you give us your name for the, so everyone will know?
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Eric Miyarka, I'm with Savion, 422 Admiral Boulevard, Kansas City, Missouri. So I just wanted to address some of the comments that were made earlier today during the public comment section, and then I'm going to answer any questions you have, but I'll be brief. The data center, the Appomattox Data Center, I had no knowledge of that, I learned of that last week. So there was not any sort of intent for us to time it with the announcement of that data center. We had no idea. Further, we can't sell power directly to that data center. The only entity that can sell power directly to a residential customer, or a commercial or industrial customer, is the utility. Utilities have the sole right to provide generation or provide electricity to everyone within their service territory. That's why we can't sell power directly to the neighbors, which is why we wanted to do the residential solar systems for folks. Same reason we can't sell power directly to any data center. So also, that's in a different utility. Technically, we're tying into the AEP grid. The Gladstone Substation is actually where the grids change, but technically, we're on the AEP side of that substation, we're not on the C-VEX side of the substation. So some of the electrons may flow into that side of the grid, but we have no business interaction with C-VEX. The other statement that was made was about the siding agreement and how it might be too good to be true. I certainly understand the skepticism, but these siding agreements are standard business practice for renewable energy projects in the Commonwealth. There's a lot of reasons for that. I think the big one is that several years ago, there was state law that was passed that abated the taxes, reduced the property tax liability for renewable energy projects. And it reduced it significantly, candidly. So if you look at the siding agreements, column on the exhibit that shows the payment structure, column A, the, I'm sorry, column B, the estimated M and T, that is, that is all that we're required to pay for taxes per state law. Everything else, and I don't have a total for that, but it's, you know, probably in the couple million dollar range, everything else is voluntary payments. So I think the big reason that you saw siding agreements become so prevalent is because the amount of tax reduction at one time was appropriate for renewable energy projects, but since the technology has gotten cheaper, it has been, become cheaper and cheaper to build and generate solar electricity, that level of tax abatement is really not needed anymore. So these siding agreements are a way for us to essentially make voluntary tax payments to the host communities. And whether or not you think it's too good to be true, the good thing is that this is a contract. This is a legally binding contract, so you don't have to believe it. It's here in paper. We sign it, the county signs it, we're held to it. Same with the conditions of the special use permit. So we felt like it was very important for us to make a very strong commitment to the county. That's why we have such an aggressive, high number with these, with the voluntary payments here. That's also why we wanted to make the $10,000 scholarship contribution to the South District. Mr. Reed, we heard during the public hearing in December that it was important for us to have a connection with the education community. That's definitely something I want to continue to explore with the high school. We weren't able to piece it together in time for this meeting, but that was one of the things, one of the benefits of doing the scholarship is that that's a way for us to reach into the, into higher education, or get folks that are in high school and provide them with resources to get to a college. So those are the only comments I was going to make, but if you have any questions, I have to answer any questions you all have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so the special use permit is before us. Probably each one of us wants to take a crack at speaking our mind on this. So who would like to go first, May?
I guess I can start. Why not? I have concerns about the special use permit being the life of the, you know, being with this land for life. And I know of at least one other special use permit in this county that has to come back around and be accepted again. And I was hoping that that could be something we discuss today. Or, or it's limited to, you know, this company. If there's a sale or something, they need to circle it, nope, can't do that. But I, I don't think it should be carte blanche. I, I would like to really limit it as much as we can. So I will open that door and see what you all have to say.
You asking us or zoning?
Oh, I, I have run it by some people. It's allowed. So, discuss.
Yeah, I think it'd be good to hear what that means.
So I believe what you're asking was if you could put a condition that the SUP would expire after the 40 years, 40-year life of the project. So that way, if after that project, they couldn't just roll it into a new solar farm, they would have to come back and get that reapproval. Now, do we know what it's going to look like in 40 years? No. But that is one way to ensure that the special use permit would actually expire. And we would recommend that be 40 years from the date of, from the start date of commercial operation, is what we would recommend.
So that would require if they were to, they could reapply at that time?
And in the contract, if I remember correctly, the first right of refusal on the project goes to the county.
Let answers that?
Yeah. If there's no other comments on that, then I guess we'll deal with that at the time a motion is made.
You want to discuss other things?
Yeah, yes, whatever else is on your mind.
For the project itself?
Yes, for the SUP.
It's on.
Yeah, we're, we're discussing the SUP here, trying to.
All right, I guess I'd like to start with saying, I, Chairman Parr, who was chairman at the time, and myself, were the ones designated to meet with the solar people, to make these agreements and chat things out. And I think they could not have picked two people that were more negative on a project on this board than, than were chosen. But I think that that benefited the county in a sense because we were going to vote no to almost anything. I, I, I do feel that we got offered money because of things that we said and things we did, and I, I feel that we got a substantial amount offered. No other locality for this size product, project has gotten anywhere near this dollar amount. And I have lost a lot of sleep over this decision because I thought we had done the county good by our negotiations, but it also makes me sick. So I wanted to bring up a few subjects and just discuss things. I, erosion is, is a common one we've been hearing. I also agree, that's a huge problem. I want to have faith in the site plan, the DEQ. I agree, solar projects five, 10 years ago were very new, and it takes a long time for the government to step up to the plate and, and deal with what they're dealing with. I, I feel- I, I feel we have people in place to really critically look at the site plan. And I, nothing's perfect, but I... Replacing agriculture, that was another huge, well, not huge, only a couple people bring this up. I, in my heart, love agriculture. Grew up on a farm. I actually can't stand monoculture, which is what pine land is. So I, I have a hard time saying this is replacing agriculture. In the true sense, yes, it is. I, I just don't know. Yes, it's ugly. You're right, I wouldn't want to look at it. I actually don't enjoy solar projects. This one, if the site, if it goes with the site plan, is not really seen. Now, when we're building it, yep, the foliage has to be mature. I had the whole, I wanted the board to visualize this solar project in Bath County that I had passed a lot. And that foliage is nice and low, and you see everything. So I, I realize there's ton involved in that. I, I do not agree with the opening up to other solar projects. That is a comment that I've gotten a few times. I've seen other counties that have said yes to solar projects years ago that have now stopped. So I, I'm not sure in the manifestation of that. I, I have asked, and each project is its individual thing, and needs to go through the same process. So I, I'm not sure what to do with that, but that gets thrown at me a lot. Anybody got anything else to say? I'm bumbling around, but...
You want to go? You want me to go?
You go.
So you're done for now?
Yeah.
I do not like solar projects. You know, you drive up 29, and you see that solar project there in Red Hill, and that's just ugly. I mean, it's right on the side of 29. It's not even straight. I mean, it, you know, did they not measure the thing? But, you know, I was, Dr. Liggins is right, they, they picked two skeptics to go in. And as of right now, I mean, I've, I've been in public service in Nelson County for 21 years, and I have never lost as much sleep over a project or a vote as I have on this one. I've been up since 3:15 this morning, doing searches and reading, and, and it's just, it's been, this one's been tough because, you know, on the one hand, they're ugly. We talked about that. On the other hand, I've never driven beside, past West Mako Land and said, ooh, isn't that pretty? You know, I mean, but it's, the view sheds from the top of that site are just incredible. But I did visit the site and where the panels are located and seeing the site plan. I was impressed with where they had put the panels. I've, my big thing that is my concern is not the solar project itself. It's, and I don't mean this to sound greedy, but it's the money. And what I mean by that is, I'm sure most of you have heard, the proposal that Creed Deeds and other Democrats are trying to push in Richmond that will take away control of these projects with, from the local government and give it to Richmond. Okay? And right now, the governor's kind of standing on his own, you know? And, and so it's a good chance that if Creed Deeds and Sam Rasool and whoever else, if they get together and, and pass this, two years from now, if we don't approve the project, which I will say, they put a couple of bulldogs on this negotiation, and we went from eight million to 16 million, and we thought, damn, they want 16 million. And we ended up at 20.2 million plus, a $10,000 a year scholarship for 40 years. It's not about the money, it's about the loss of the money. If that decision-making is taken away from local government officials and given to Richmond, they can come in here two years and build that solar farm right where they're talking about doing it, and we don't get that money. And that's what I'm struggling with because I don't want a solar farm on East Branch, and you see it when you're driving down 151 or, or up 56 going to Montebello. I don't want it in my backyard. I don't want it in your backyard. But I fear that the loss of control, because the state of Virginia has said they have clean energy goals, and those goals aren't going to be met without some solar projects. And they're going to meet those goals, and they're going to do it, I fear, by taking control away. Because no, no board of supervisors is going to sit up here and, well, maybe some, but most board supervisors are going to know that a solar farm in their constituents' backyard is not wanted. And so, you know, we all like what we're doing and want to get reelected, and, you know, so we think about that. But in this situation, this is not about the special use permit, oh, it's battery. It's not necessarily about the special use permit and, and that process. My fear is them taking away control from the locality, and that's where I'm leaning right now. You know, I'm still not a plan, I mean, not a fan of the project. And, you know, there have been a lot of negatives that have come up. I will hit a couple of things that, that, you know, diluting the funds into the general fund, you know, yes, that is an accurate statement, but at the same time, we have a board of supervisors who mentally, and we've said to each other, if we do this, we know we want to spend money in Gladstone. We want, and the scholarship is helping with that, but more than just a scholarship, we want to invest the money as much as we can into the community. On the other side, we just gave the school system the equivalent of $10 million of our capital project budget last year. And we can make up for part of that if we do a project like this. By giving them that $600,000 a year increase, it accounts for $10 million of capital improvement. On the other side, you know, what happens when the solar farm gets hit by hail, and you've got all those broken panels, who knows? The runoff, we have to put a lot of trust in DEQ and those officials to, to make sure that the stormwater management practices are in place and, and being adhered to. You know, I know the data center thing is, is, is kind of like pulling the rug out from them, just the, the timing of that announcement. And, you know, this power goes into the grid. It does not go into data centers. It's not sent to any one location. It goes to the power company, and then it's just like dropping some water in the ocean. It's absorbed into that. This, this is a very difficult decision. So I might have more to say later, but that's it for now.
Did you hear?
No.
Oh, first and foremost, thank you all for being here, seeing your faces again. It's an important piece of the story of us being able to govern, as Dr. Liggins and Mr. Parr have indicated, you know, this is not as simple of a vote. You know, I, I do have some thoughts and opinions on the situation. You know, I'm, I'm first going to preface this. I grew up in a household that, you know, my dad was in the beginning phases of doing solar back in the 70s, back in the Jimmy Carter days when they had all those tax credits and whatnot. So it's not an unfamiliar concept. I'm proud to have been able to make what I call seasonally net zero houses in my career as a home builder, and just being able to create some of that independence. From a perspective of solar in the concept itself, I, I do not, you know, there, certainly I have not been able to experience what it's like to build even remotely near a megawatt. Some of that technology is not new. It's been used around the country. However, you know, as we look at what our goals as a county and what our goals as a community are going to be in the future, you know, I'll, I'll look at you and say, you know, I've voted yes on a lot of special use permits, that's material fact. And I've always looked at it from the guise of Livingston and Skyler, and, you know, one of those biggest pieces is job creation. And I'm speaking towards just my philosophy, not the specific project, you know? If something that creates recurring jobs for my community is a good thing, because as many of you know, and lots, many portions of our community, you know, there is a need for high-paying jobs. Obviously, this project doesn't really do that. It creates a one-time economic incident where you got construction crews coming in, and though that's not necessarily a bad thing, it's not a recurring thing. And I certainly do enjoy having the recurring aspect of that that I would rather have. As I look at the dollars and cents, if I were to seriously just look at you all, you know, this doesn't, it doesn't lower your electric bills. It doesn't, you know, necessarily protect farmland. It doesn't do a lot of these things. It's helping some of the neighbors, and I'm happy that they are doing that. However, as I kind of look at this project, and the $20 million, we don't even necess, as we look at the maneuvering of what potentials the state has and what they're going to take from us, and as Mr. Parr has said, there have been a lot of conversations about that. It's not hard to find those articles. Now, that's not enough of a reason for me to vote yes. I kind of look at this with a skeptical mind and, you know, what the future outlay is going to be with energy, you know? What is the true answer? Solar is yes. I think that's going to be a piece of it, and I think it's probably one of the quickest mechanisms that the Commonwealth has to produce energy, but it's not even remotely going to even touch the demand requirements that it needs. These data centers that are coming into this community, they're, they're swapping up hundreds of megawatts at a time. Putting into perspective, you know, if this solar facility were just taking care of residency, it would take care of a serious amount of energy needs for our residential purposes. But as it hits the grid, it's going straight to these data centers, it's going straight to the cities, it's going straight to these industrial areas. And, you know, the, the state has seriously put some pressures on you, the consumer, that I think were definitely not thought through the entire way. If you thought paying taxes were bad, well, just wait till your electric bill's $500 a month. And I don't necessarily think this solar facility is going to be lowering your electric bill. It might keep it from hitting $1,000, but man, we're talking about a problem much greater than the one that we here sit at this table can resolve. I, I, I certainly look at this, and yeah, it does come down to the money and what that means for, you know, maybe not raising taxes, maybe this goes towards some school capital funds, maybe this goes towards some pieces of where we want to develop our community. That's a maybe, and we're talking only $300,000, $400,000 a year. You know, that's a drop in the bucket into some pieces of the needs that we have. So as I look at this, I do look at it skeptical. I, I do question, you know, of course, I, I want to say this, I appreciate my colleagues who have also worked very hard on this topic, and you all should rest easy knowing that this discussion has been taken very seriously. And I, of course, you know, I don't normally think, especially, but you guys, thank you for the interactions and some pieces of the story of what the mass solar is, you guys have taught us something, obviously. I do rest a little easier in learning that, you know, you have to have those high transmission lines available for the, for a mega, a large solar facility to happen, so Nelson County is limited to where these locations happen. I'm actually extremely grateful for that in the event the state takes the authority away from the local government. But, you know, I, I still sit here skeptical about what the, what the true answer is on the energy topic, on what this community needs. I'll always sit here and tell you, I'm going to be pro creating high-paying jobs for our kids and our future generations and the generations that we have here today. And checking that box is probably one of the most important aspects for me into voting on a special use permit. I'm done.
Okay. Well, I too want to thank everybody that spoke on this because you informed us all on the pros and the cons, and want to thank my colleagues, of course, who have done the same and articulated their thoughts and feelings really well. And we batted these things around individually and, and kind of one-on-one in terms of things. You know, I started thinking about energy systems in 1979 when I designed my home off the grid. My wife and I did that. We, we took the approach at that time that, that minimizing your energy needs was the most thoughtful way to build a home. Because in doing that, you did for yourself what you would have used energy to do otherwise, and you get to use the energy that you have as opposed to the energy that they have, and you won't have to pay for it. And that's a pretty simplistic way of saying that we wanted to be responsible about where the energy came from and how much of it we used, and that we were effective and efficient in terms of what we did with our lives. And as a teacher, I always put that forth when I was teaching physics about energy, that those things were very important. Of course, when you're teaching energy, you don't get to always do that. I was in a fortunate situation where I could speak directly to students doing energy audits in their homes and figuring out how much energy each of their appliances used and how much it costs them to do that. And it was always enlightening to the students and myself how everyone responded to that. So I've been thinking about energy and energy systems for a very long time. And for those people that say, you know, the system is rigged, you know, I can't agree with you more. We have a really bad energy model, which was, you know, at that time, my way of, I guess rebelling against what the, the normal, you know, energy generation, almost having a nuclear power plant sited in Nelson County would do to you. And, and knowing that the model that we have today, one grid to serve everybody, no redundancy, no opportunity for communities to generate energy on their own behalf, communities to live within their own means to generate energy, or focusing on conservation in any way, energy conservation, it's a bad model. And I think a lot of our, the responses that we've all had to this has a lot to do with, we have a model that is not a good one and not one that really serves individuals or the community ultimately in ways that it could and arguably should. So, so if we're stuck with a bad model, what do you do when you have something like this come in front of you? Well, you know, what would a good model be? And I think that for individuals to live within their means, I think for individuals to live within their ability to, to, you know, sustain themselves in a healthy and positive kind of way, I think for communities to be able to generate and live within their own energy abilities to generate it is a good model. And of course, that's not one we have at this point. The closest we have is a net metering system that they allow us to do in Richmond, which does not really serve the homeowners and the people that do have the ability to generate energy on their own. So, you know, but we're in a position where we have to make a choice, and we've got an opportunity here to make a choice, so what the heck's it going to be? Well, I think first of all, if we know there's a better model out there, and if we know that ultimately the model that we have now has to change, or our grandchildren are going to live and suffer in a, in a world that none of us would want to live in, I think that we have to make a choice based on what we have and do the very best we can. So in doing that, and acknowledging that, I think that this project is really not a proxy for data centers. Um, data centers are their own black hole. I mean, it's one that, um, all of us are connected to in some way. All of us have to pay the price some way, the costs to get the benefits that we have become accustomed to because we haven't had much choice except to live in the time where we are and live with what we have. So, um, and I believe the data centers will maybe be one or one of many things that will, uh, have to be reined in just realistically. Um, I don't know how that's going to happen. Other people are going to have to make those types of decisions. But the kind of decisions we can make have to do with us being able to live within our means and doing what serves the county. And, um, the greatest coincidence with this model was that 90 megawatts can power the entire, our entire county now with plenty left over. And that was something, when that first came up, um, that was, well, why don't we power ourselves and serve the county with what that is? Well, of course, the model that we have doesn't allow that to happen. Um, it's a different model that we've got to work with. Um, what are things going to look like in the future? Well, I know that things are going to have to change. There's going to have to be redundancy. Communities are going to have to be more involved in the, both the generation and the use of the amount of energy that they have. There's just no question in my mind that's going to happen. But, uh, I may not live that long to actually see that happen. Um, but I do believe that's going to happen. And that's why I thought that it was a great idea for us to be able to have the right of first refusal on this at the end of 40 years, because in the event that would happen, that could possibly give us an asset that could fit a good model if one does exist at that time. Whose job is it to create a good model? Well, it's all of ours, you know? It's the people in Richmond, it's the people in the federal government. It's us. Um, but not only to have a good model, but the steps that we take along the way, we have to make sure that those, you know, can feed a good model as opposed to only feeding a bad one. So, um, and I also believe that making a decision on something doesn't keep you from having to ever pay attention to it again. Because if we approve this tonight, um, and I'm going to vote that we do, um, it's going to mean that the decision that we make today means that we're going to have to continue being responsible to make sure we do have a good model, that this can at some time fit into and that the model that we have becomes a better one. And we can do that as individuals. We can do that with groups we are a part of, with communities, with our board, with the state. We can do that at all these different levels. I've played those games at all those different levels. I know what they're like. I know it's like beating your head against the wall. But, um, when you make a decision, you have a responsibility to live that decision. And, um, I think that if we're able to make a commitment to a better model and a better future, then I can approve this despite all the costs involved with it, and they are many, that, um, at least give us something positive that we can hang our head on and work towards that can serve both the community and the individuals in it and beyond. So... You know, welcome any more comments from anybody that would like to add anything or make a motion. Uh, in the absence of other board members making a motion, I would make one. Dylan, do you have a comment?
Yes, thank you. Um, just since I know you're going to make a motion to approve, I have some language to add, amended to the conditions if you want to, uh, limit the special use permit to expire on the 40th anniversary of the commercial operation date.
Well, I will make a motion to approve the, uh... Actually, before I do this, um, Mr. Parr, Dr. Liggins, thank you so much for all the hard work that you guys put into this and, uh, and Jesse for bringing all the resources that you to help inform us as well. Uh, it was a lot, and I'm glad it was you guys doing that. Anyway. Um, I would like to make a motion that, uh, we approve special use permit, uh, 24-0014, Large Solar Energy System, Wild Rose Solar Project, um, uh, with the amendment that the SUP shall expire on the 40th anniversary of the commercial operating date unless otherwise extended by the board of supervisors, which is the language that Dylan suggests.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Uh, is there any further discussion? Anyone would like to contribute to our decision? Amanda?
Dr. Liggins?
Yes.
Mr. Rutherford?
No.
Mr. Parr?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
The, um, we have the proposed citing agreement before us as well. Um, the citing agreement has been proposed and submitted, and we have the current version of that. Um, so I assume that ultimately we need a motion to accept the citing agreement. Okay? Um, I would like to, um, open that for discussion for anyone that would like to, um, whatever hasn't been already discussed in terms of the signing agreement, say anything back to it.
Were, there aren't any changes that we've made that need to be reflected in the citing agreement, are there? No. That's completely separate. Okay.
When it comes to the scholarship, at the, if it were more than one student and, you know, we split it up, how it's written now that's allowed? Does that, does that make sense?
It says, uh, it does say one or more students.
Okay.
Any further questions or clarifications?
And that scholarship is selected at the discretion of the county and Wild Rose Solar Project LLC, or their designee. So we will have input in that as a locality. Yep.
I don't think it specifies a process.
Right.
We'll have to figure that one out. Okay, would anyone like to make a motion?
Well, we've done it now, so, I mean, and I will put, hang my hat on the dollar amount a little bit. So I move that we approve the proposed citing agreement, Large Solar Energy System, Wild Rose Solar, as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion on the citing agreement? Okay, Amanda?
Dr. Liggins?
Yes.
Mr. Rutherford?
No.
Mr. Parr?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Okay, um, the other item listed here is the, uh, the, the Wild Rose, uh, appeal for the planning commission determination that, uh, that the proposal was, was not concurrent with our comprehensive plan?
By approving the special use permit that already automatically appealed the planning commissions, or, I'm sorry, overturned the planning commission's determination.
Okay, so there's no action?
Correct.
We need to take a decision.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you, Dylan. Very much. Okay. Um, any other business to take up this evening? If not, I...
I did get an answer on the lights in, uh, that Livingston area. For three lights, it's $12 each. They'll install for free. I'll send Candy the email.
$12 a month?
Yeah. If we could put it on, yeah.
Per light.
And I'm thinking two to three.
Okay.
But I'll, February, I'll get up so they can talk to AT people. But I just wanted to bring that up.
Fair enough. Okay, thank you. Okay, I will, uh, recognize the motion to adjourn.
I move.
Second.
Okay. Motion in a second. Amanda?
Yes.
Should I run it now? Yes.
Mr. Parr?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Means adjournance.